Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I want to welcome you all to the Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're glad to have you all here with us in person. We have several people.
Good morning.
And we have Commissioner Edmondson is online joining us. Good morning. You're coming in loud and clear, Commissioner, so we're glad to, we're glad to have you with us remotely. At this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Matt Richardson, our Denton County Health Director. He is going to lead us in our invocation, and then our pledges will be led by our Denton County's very own Veteran Service Officer, Paul Bastard. I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones and please stand.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please join me in prayer. God, we thank you for today. We are so, uh, we're so thankful. We have so much gratitude that we have been given another day to be an example of yours. Father, I just thank you for that opportunity, and, um, Father, we thank you for so many good things. Um, we, so many things that are too numerous to list in our lives that come from you. We call them blessings, Father, gifts, blessings, uh, but these, these good things we know have a beginning, and that beginning is you, Father. We thank you for that. This morning, I want to lift up the court, uh, the judge and commissioners. Father, we thank you for them and their leadership. Um, God, I ask for wisdom and guidance for the leaders of our country. Uh, Father, it seems like every time can be a difficult time, and yet we look to you for that guidance. We look to you for peace. We look to you for mercy. Uh, we look to you to provide us with those, uh, gifts of the Spirit, Father. For those of us who have accepted that, we, we want those gifts of the Spirit, uh, so that we can be better people for each other and for you. Father, we ask for that strength this morning. Um, we need strength when our family members are ill and when things are hard, so we look to you for that reassurance of things hoped for and the confidence of things not seen yet, Father, as you say in Hebrews. Father, this morning, we bring a special prayer and a special ask to you at your feet. Father, we ask you be with our children. We, we ask you be with the teachers as school begins. Um, Father, for parents, it's, it's a hard time. We're letting go, and so we ask for that strength. Um, we know you have done that as our Father, and so we ask for the strength to continue. We ask for the, our kids to have a great year. We ask for strength and much, much, much patience on behalf of the teachers. Um, be with them this year as they begin a new. Father, we just, we bring, um, our children and their teachers and schools all across America. We bring that to you this morning, Father, and ask for a good year for safety, which, uh, is new for some of us to be asking for that, and yet we do. We ask for safety and security, um, a peaceful place for learning for our kids. Father, we ask you be with law enforcement. Um, stand by them in hard times and troubled times. We ask you be with leaders of our faith community. Uh, these are troubled times, Father, and we see it in every time, but we ask for an extra measure of your support. Father, help us to reflect character and integrity in all that we do, um, from the example of your son and in his life on this earth and the teachings of, of him and his disciples. We ask for that strength, and we ask for that character and integrity to be passed on. We ask for, um, just forgiveness when we fall short of those examples. Father, I thank you that we could take a moment this morning and bring these things to you, things on our heart. We, I thank you for that opportunity, and I thank you for, um, the sacrifice of your son so that we can understand what it means to be a parent, and, Father, we thank you for that sacrifice, and it's through Jesus' name this morning we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning. Please join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Matt, I want to tell you thank you for that. Very special. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. We have no one registered for public comments today, so we'll proceed past that. All right, let's, I think we can go in order today. So let's go to item two, which is our consent agenda members. Are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda, or do we have a motion for approval as presented? Motion by Com- Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of the order-making appointments. Item two B is approval of interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of payroll. Item two D is approval of budget amendment request one zero two zero five zero for the county criminal court number three to transfer four thousand dollars from veterans' court expenses to court-appointed attorneys. Funding is needed to cover anticipated expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year and any appropriate action. Item two E is approval of budget amendment request one zero two zero seven zero for the county criminal court number one to transfer six hundred twenty-five dollars from the psychiatric services to county criminal court number two psychiatric services. Funding is needed to clear the negative balance for psychiatric services. Item two F is approval of budget amendment request one zero two zero eight zero for agrolife extension to transfer two thousand four and three dollars from mileage reimbursement to demonstration supplies and two hundred fifty to hospitality supplies for a total transfer two thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars to fund the ba- the purchase of promotional items used for programs and networking events and to cover the cost of water delivery subscription. All right. Next is go to item four A, which is our public hearing on August the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, for the approval of the replat of the Oaks, the Chase Oaks lots five R one and four A block one. This is fifteen acres located in Commissioner Precinct one. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move to open.
Motion to open a public hearing by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in our public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak, speak in favor of or opposed to the replat of Chase Oaks addition? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Chase Oaks replat? Hearing none. There is a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for-
Second.
Commissioner Williams and second by Commissioner Falconer for the replat. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Next, let's go to item five A, approval of the bill report. This is for payments from C S C D Community Corrections, T A I P, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, V I T Interest and D A forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no, uh, changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
Perfect. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five B, acceptance and approval of the twenty twenty-four monthly financial reports through May twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Judge. Um, I just wanted to go over, our numbers are coming in as expected. Our, um, if you look at our balance sheet, we have, uh, you can see it growing from year to year, and most of that is, uh, from tax collections and from interest earnings.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. We do have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five C, approval of the jail commissary annual audit report for the year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five D, approval of the twenty twenty-four investment policy and any appropriate action. Did you, go ahead.
Yeah, um, we have no changes, uh, this year, uh, from last year. It's the same policy, and things are working well for, uh, so we recommend no changes.
Perfect. Okay.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is go to item five E, approval of the pay request, the amount of two hundred one thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents associated with the interlocal agreement between Denton County and the North Texas Tollway Authority executed on February the fifth, twenty thirteen, for the Dallas North Tollway Extension four B project in the county commissioner precinct one.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of the reports on proceeds from the online surplus auction, uh, number two four two eight two five held in July of twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of the exception to purchasing policy zero three two. Item C for a period of six months ending February the sixth, twenty twenty-five, for the purchase of vehicles up to seventy-five thousand dollars each.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval of order of I T B two four two eight two one, tree lighting, annual maintenance to decor I Q.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approval of exemption from bidding for the sole source purchase of enhancement to the C J I S Odyssey Court Administration System from Tyler Technologies, amount of fifty-five thousand four hundred forty dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, let's go ahead and do seven. A, approval of budget amendment request one zero two zero four zero for the county jail to transfer six hundred forty-nine thousand from non-departmental unappropriated contingency with four hundred twenty-three thousand to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment and human resources policy as recommended by the budget office, and six hundred and two hundred and twenty-six thousand to out-of-county prisoner expense funds are needed to the, to a, due to a shortage of detention officers and to cover the cost of inmates housed at the Cook and Johnson County jails for the month of July. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
I'll move approval.
Did you, did you make the motion?
I did.
Commissioner, motion by Commissioner seconds, motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a little-
Go ahead, sir.
Um, and unfortunately, I know the sheriff's not here, uh, so I'll, I'll have this discussion with him as well, but looking over the overtime, um, you know, a- and then the, obviously out-of-county, I think we've got to look at, because this, these numbers are ridiculously high.
Yeah.
Especially for what we've done to try to promote, uh, hiring and increasing the detention one officers and two. The overtime pay has gotten higher because we did increase the pay, so now it's, it's biting us, if you will, to a certain extent.
As soon as we're hired, it's paying more.
Hired to get people in, but now we're paying a lot more for overtime. And, and looking at some of the overtime, we, we have a couple of people working eighty hours of overtime in a pay period, which I don't even know if that's even rea- I mean, I don't even know how you can, how you can physically do that. So I've got some concerns with the amount of overtime that certain individuals are working over there, and then the safety of those individuals, and then obviously the jail. So I'll, I'll talk with, uh, sheriff about that, but, um, and there's also a disparity between some of the people that don't work overtime versus the ones that are working. There's, it's not spread out very well, and so, um, I'm just curious, you know, I know that that was one of the big deals where they had forced overtime, and, and I, and I'm not seeing that from the standpoint of the numbers, and, um, I, I, I'm sorry, our job is to look at the numbers, and we're spending a ton of money over there, and I'm not so sure we shouldn't bring down the overtime hours and outsource more of our, our, um, inmates to other counties because it's going to be less expensive. I, I, it's got to be. So I would just like to see that, um, and, and see if we can help the sheriff with, with those dollars a little bit, um, because I know he's doing everything he can. He's, he's in a tough spot, but it's our, our job to help him the best we can. So anyway, my two cents.
Uh, I understand. Did you have something?
I, I agree, and I, I did ask the sheriff for some analysis on the out-of-county because I think they're, especially with our new pay rates, it actually may be cheaper in some instances to, to do that, but we're still on, I believe it said that we're still on forced overtime as well, and I'm not sure how we can't bring some of that down since we have, we do have folks that have rolled on now, I think, that are out of training and all that stuff, so those are all good questions.
Yeah, and I think that's the tough part. Just because we hire them doesn't mean they're actually immediately put in action to help out. They have to go through the training, and, and so that's part of the deal that we have to realize that, uh, just because you have a five new hire or ten new hire, those people don't actually make an impact immediately, so, uh, it, it takes a little bit of time. But anyway, thank you, Judge.
You bet. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B, approval of budget amendment request one zero two zero six zero to transfer eighteen thousand from non-departmental unappropriated con- regular contingency to appropriations. M H M R for payment of services provided by M H M R for in custody mental health interviews and reports as required by the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Article sixteen point two-two and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval of budget amendment request one zero two zero nine zero for the Public Facilities Construction Management Department to transfer seven thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars from permanent improvement fund unappropriated contingency to permanent improvement fund professional services to cover the cost of professional services of the Charlie Cole Chiller H V A C project materials testing and geotechnical. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will go through. I'll do that later. Let's go to item eight A, a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one demotion in the county clerk, one demotion in the district clerk, one new hire in the sheriff's office, and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Okay. Thank you. This is, again, this is presented for recording purposes only. Item twelve A is a report from approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five joint interlocal cooperation agreement for school resource investigator between the Denton Independent School District, uh, D I S D in Denton County.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B, approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five interlocal agreements for the use of the Denton County radio communication system for the Auburn Independent School District Police Department, the Corinth Police Department, and the Roanoke Fire Department.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement, the I C A, between Denton County, Texas and the city of Justin for collection of special assessments levied by the Timberbrook two one A one Public Improvement District.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item fourteen B, approval of a change order number two to the contract between Denton County, Texas and Collaborative Solutions L O C for enterprise resource planning, the E R P software and implementation services, and then additional amount of one hundred and twelve thousand seven or seventeen dollars with funding to come from the E R P implementation project, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, all are line item five four six 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 one one zero eight six and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, approval of change order number one to the contract between Denton County, Texas and K and M Technologies Incorporated for the enterprise resource plan, any E R P software and implementation services, an additional amount of nine thousand two hundred forty dollars for the configuration of the revenue submission module and remove thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars with funding to come from E R P Implementation Project, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Funds, all are line item five four six 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 four one zero eight six.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm trying to- I'm trying to get you a word in, Diane, so I'm trying to. There's a slight delay, but you're doing great. You're doing great, and I'm glad you're able to join us virtually. Let's go, we've finished most of those items. Let's go back to, let's go to item 17, community updates, before we open our budget session. We'll go to, start with Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Judge. I just have one thing today. Obviously, I want to extend prayers and condolences to the family of, the family and Fort Worth Police Department for the tragedy of Sergeant Billy Randolph that passed away, obviously, in a horrible accident scene. And obviously, it's important for us to think about him, his family, and obviously, all the other officers that are out there, and firefighters for that matter, that work traffic accidents that need to safety. So, I just wanted to extend that out. That's all I have, Judge.
Yeah, that saddened me greatly.
Yes. Horrible situation.
Most dangerous place for our police officers down there.
That's right. That's one of the reasons that the RTC really promotes the Highway Incident Management Plan to get people off the roadway and get them off the road.
No, 100%.
Well, that was a fire, but I mean.
Well, in that situation, the person came up the wrong, I mean, it's just such a horrible.
Well, they were a drunk driver.
Yeah, it was a drunk driver.
There were barriers, and they still went through the barriers.
Yeah, yeah.
Crazy.
Don't drink and drive, please.
Yes. Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you so much, Judge. Well, we want to remember all of our schools that have started and some starting today. I talked to my daughter last night who teaches in LISD. She, I asked her last night at 10 o'clock if she was ready. She said she was at school finishing up.
Finishing up the pre-work.
Finishing up getting your library ready, but anyway.
Typical teacher.
That's right. That's not unusual, I don't think. So, anyway, I'm thinking about all of them and the students and the parents. We've got a few events happening in Carrollton. We have a civilian response to active shooter. It's a neighborhood partnership workshop. That is going to be on the 14th at 6:00 at the municipal court. And then in Denton, or sorry, in Frisco, we'll have the summer movie series on the 16th at 8:00. That's at PGA Frisco. And they'll also have their regular role with the council. That's the riding along on the trails with the elected officials, and that's on the 17th at 10:00 a.m. at Allen Elementary School. And that is all I have.
Good, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mitchell.
I have Lake City's Chamber of Commerce.
Is your mic on?
Tomorrow, 11:30. Also have an opportunity for all of us to support our nonprofit that you choose. Mayors in the Lake City area are going to be having a mayoral pizza cook-off. And so, you can join them by committing money and to your favorite charity. They each will represent the favorite charity. That's August the 28th, but I want to put it on your radar now. We have the Lakeside Music Series, August 16th, 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. Lake City's Trade Days in Farmers Market, August 17th, and Thrive's Acoustic Jam, August 16th, 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. Please govern yourself accordingly.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Edmondson.
Well, first of all, I can report firsthand that COVID is making a comeback in Denton County and actually across the state. So, but thank you for allowing me to work from home today, and I should be in court next week. Denton has a community market that's taking place on the 17th, 9:00 to 1:00. That's at their senior center. And then in Double Oak, they're having Jolly Bean drop-offs and Snack Bean drop-offs. Among other things, these will be given to some LISD schools. And with our schools just starting up again, I know that's a lot of help. In Haslip, they're having the Carter Blood Care Blood Drive on the, looks like the 30th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and that's going to be in the library parking lot. Lastly, in Trophy Club, they're having a dive-in movie fun thing going on August 30th, 8:15 to 10:15 p.m., and that's at their Trophy Club Community Club. That's it. Thank you, Judge.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell would like to add a thought.
I had the opportunity this morning to do a red carpet for the Central Elementary School where we welcomed the kids back to school, and some of those little faces were so happy, and some of them were so small, their backpacks were larger than they were. But it was a great opportunity to do that, and I always enjoy doing that every year.
Call me next year, I'll go.
Okay, I will.
As an alum.
Yeah.
Central Elementary.
It's a good opportunity. The kids are excited to help us. They're waving the pom-poms. So, I did that at 7:15 and enjoyed every bit of it. So, I'm still robbed up.
That's wonderful. Well, you'd be a good cheerleader.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have our North Texas Fair and Rodeo, it's a 96 annual. And Jody, do you want to talk about that for just a second? You've been very active with that.
Sure, Judge. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, the fair was established, the North Texas Fair and Rodeo was established in 1928. They have over 700 volunteers. The interesting part is that, you know, there's a $12 million annual economic impact to the county that the fair provides in that nine-day timeframe that the fair provides, their annual fair to the county and the city of Denton. Over 34,000 in scholarships from the money generated. The fair gets back $34,000 in scholarships as well as over $725,000 reinvested back into community activities and into the community annually. So, it's a very good, very good opportunity. We have a lot of entertainment headliners coming this year, starting this Friday night. And there's, you can go to ntfair.com, and there's a lot of information about who the entertainers are for each night. There's multiple entertainers, there's headliners, and then there's ones that start every day at 6:00, the smaller entertainment venues, if you will. So, they start at 6:00, and then they do it again at 11:00. And then there's a rodeo each night. So, it's fun for all, one ticket. One price gets you into everything. So, it's going to be exciting time, and we hope for cooler weather.
Yes, absolutely. It's a great, it's a great event. As the clowns.
I'm the clown.
No, I want you to ride the horses. I'll be the clown for you.
Goodness. I want to echo the comments about the first day of school. Today was Caroline's last first day of school at LISD.
There's going to be a lot of laughs.
Yes, I know. And so, I just want to thank all of our schoolteachers for what they do, the great job they do shaping the lives in a positive way for our next generation of citizens and leaders. And it's just, it's been a blessing to have those kids go through the school system. And I told her last night, I said, you know, you're a senior, and you don't have a lot of necessary school supplies. But think about all the kids across this county and America who may not have school supplies. And I just want to, I want to give a big shout out to all of our nonprofits that came together, who raised money all last year. They've been raising money, and then they invested that in the lives of the kids these last couple of weeks on these back-to-school drives. And so, helped get kids' backpacks, helped get kids' school supplies so that today was a more peaceable, less anxiety-filled day when these kids rolled into a school campus like you saw today at Central. And I just, I really was thinking about that last night. I thought, you know, it's just, today was made much easier for so many kids